All right, at 5:32, so we'll get started. This is again just a Lost Morris Creek Project Workshop. And to consider and work on, as we're considering, looking at and trying to work on the drainage of Lost Morris Creek through the city, through the Fort Clark Springs. At this time, if you'll at least stand, we'll have an invocation. We do not have a flag in here, I apologize for that. So we'll have a prayer, and I'll ask Commissioner Ward to lead us in prayer, and then we'll skip the place since we don't have a flag per se.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today. We thank you for the blessings of life, and Lord, we thank you for where we live. And we just ask, Lord, that you would bless our nation, our state, our county. Lord, we pray for our county as a whole, that, Lord, we both work in unity, one with another. Lord, that you will bless and encourage us, that you would guide and direct us. And this evening, Lord, we especially pray for, we just pray for abundance, right? And you would send, restore our springs and our streams and all of our creeks and wells. And so, Lord, we lift it up to you, knowing that you want to send good and perfect gifts. And so we ask for the gift we want this evening. We just ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. All right, really not a quarrel to be present, but we are represented by, we'll start down here at the end of the table, Commissioner Farrar, Commissioner Mettavo from the county, Board Clerk Director, Board Member John Wiley, Tom Hookley with the, Tony Hookley, I mean, with the Board Clerk as well, myself, Commissioner Dotson, Commissioner Ward, County Attorney Brent Smith, City Mayor, Eric Martinez, almost said it wrong, and then Ms. Reeves down there, City Manager, is who sits up here at the table for you this afternoon, this evening. Our agenda's pretty short and sweet, but that doesn't mean, I mean, it is what it is. And Item 3A is to discuss a deadline with entities to define their commitment and participation in development of the Lost Morris Creek Project Plan and Project Implementation. And simply there is, as I stated earlier in the meetings and stuff, the county is kind of serving as a mediator here to work through this project. We did a easement study, feasibility study, of the drainage of Lost Morris Creek. We had a hydrologist and engineer work also. That's what you see over here, the drawings, the plans and so forth. Nothing's been implemented. This is all in the just premature stages of trying to work and develop something that would help benefit the city and benefit the Fort Clark residents as well. As you know, we had a lawsuit filed in the late 90s, early 90s, I'm sorry, early 90s that regarded the easement that the county owns along Lost Morris Creek through Fort Clark Springs. That easement came about in the 50s when the dams were built north of town, when the core of engineers came in and built those dams, they granted an easement along Lost Morris Creek through Fort Clark Springs simply for the county to help maintain and try to keep the creek functioning and flowing. The flood came in the late, early 90s, late, early 90s, I'm sorry. And it had a court order that we needed to clean it up, do some work under the creek. And at that time, the commissioners and the judge found money through an NRCS grant, about $100,000, and they went in and removed just the big denture breathing stuff out of the creek, tried to open it and help clean it up a little bit that way. We have an opportunity now to address that and look at that again. And then this would be, like I say, a grant-funded project between the entities of the city, the Fort Clark Springs Membership Association, and the county. And the county's responsibility here would be the dams, preserving and taking care of those, and we had a report this morning in Commissioners Court regarding those. So this evening, we would just simply, we can turn it over to discussion across the table, give you about three minutes at the microphone to address some situations or concerns like that. By no means I plan on being here all night. I don't have that much stuff. I don't think Tony brought enough. Did you bring some for me too? Nope? All right. But anyway, that's where we're at, folks, and that's, this is a workshop. There's nothing, there's nothing done yet, there's no contractor sign, there's no even estimates done. This is just a preliminary workshop as we work to build and look into this possible situation. We have the situation of the addressing this water through the city, across Highway 90, and then of course into Fort Clark Springs, and then going out through the back of Fort Clark Springs. So that's why we're here. One of the agenda items I asked that we address here in a little bit, I'm gonna turn it over to public comment, if that's okay with everybody, and we'll look at that and address that. But one of the things like the agenda says is define the commitment from the entities involved in and prioritize our projects. And that was something that we addressed at the last meeting as well, was looking into what we would define as the steps. It's no means is it one deal done, it would be done over the course of several years. Obviously, it goes to the size of the project and the amount of work to be done, and with all the entities, if all the entities want to continue to move forward with this project. And that is solely up to each entity involved. The county's just simply, as I say, we're kind of the mediator here to offer this out and work towards this. We have some of an obligation with easement that is along the creek and so forth from that. So that's kind of a 10,000-foot view right quick for you, the preliminary, the plans, they're probably at a 30,000-foot, if you really want to dissect it, because this is not a final, by no means. We're simply trying to address where to start and come to the table and discuss these items and work through them. We can choose not to do anything, that is always an option on the table. So with that, I'll turn it over to public comment. I'm comfortable with three minutes, kind of give you about three minutes if you want to address the folks that sit up here. There's no, no, really no vote, no action taken by the court tonight. This is a workshop for us. We've already adjourned our Kish Commissioners Court meeting just a little while ago. So we're just here tonight to work and visit, have an open mic discussion with the entities involved, address questions or concerns and so forth from that. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to someone at the table who'd like to speak first. I'll give the folks up here at the table first, first opportunity at the microphone, and then we'll go from there. If no one wants to speak here, I will turn it over to the floors. Everybody all right with that? There's no refreshments or anything, there's a water fountain around the corner in the restroom and the stuff, everybody probably knows where they are, but we don't have any Coke or water or anything like that. I got a little bit of stuff if you need some stuff. But other than that, we'll get, we'll get started. Is everybody good with that email at the table right now we'd like to address or have an open comment? I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is John Wiley, I'm the Director for Fort Clark Springs. I would like to make just a public comment to correct the record. I made a comment last month's Commissioners Meeting, Board meeting, where we talked about the Lost Morris Project. And apparently that message should not come across or have the intent that I intended it to have. I just want to say I'm sorry to all the other Commissioners up here if I've offended y'all. That was not, I would hope that y'all could reach out to the other board members and they would tell you the same thing, that was not what I was trying to do. And yeah, my deepest apologies if I've offended y'all on anything that I said. I would hope that y'all hear the good stuff that I said, that I grew up with most of y'all's children, that you're good people and deserve the benefit of the doubt. And so I'm sorry for any feelings that were.
All right, thank you, John Wiley. Anybody else at the table? I'd say anything. All right, we'll turn it over to the microphone right here. Like I say, give about three minutes. I'm not gonna jump down there and throw you down or anything like that, but if you'd like to, come on.
Thank you, Judge Schuster. For the record, my name is Wes Robinson, and I just think it's important for everyone to understand that how this came about. You mentioned the storm in the 90s, August 1998, it was dropped from Charlie. It came in near Port Ranzas and came up the Rio Grande Valley. And over the course of seven days, I measured over 20 inches of rain at my place here in Kenny County. Two nights, five and a half inch rain gauge was completely filled, so I really don't know how much we got, but I know we got it between eight inches and seven days. And we came within about a foot of hitting the emergency spillways of the levee over here on the northwest side of Rackinville. Because County Conservation Department took me up there after it was over and I threw pictures of it and put it on my front page of the newspaper. And so the project that y'all got handed the ball on has actually been going on and been kind of processed for 28 years until you finally got to this point. Every county administration has gotten the ball passed, you know, and they've continued to run with it to try and get it to a point where you could do something. And I just want you to know that I'm proud of all of you for doing that. I know you're doing the right thing for the right reasons, and there's even more that will have to be done after this phase of the project. At some future point, to completely eliminate the problem that we had. And a lot of people that are upset and thinking that there's something, the fairies going on or the county has forced it, something on the Ford, this is all revolves around getting one flooding and about foot of water, foot and a half of water going across Highway 90 during that flood, a burden of shame. If you weren't here, you have no idea what it was like. We were landlocked, we couldn't go to Del Rio, couldn't go to Rock Springs, couldn't go to Y Valley, couldn't go to Agapass. We were okay. We did a lot better with Del Rio, did it. But this does need to be done, and I'm glad that y'all are doing it. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
My name is Elizabeth Hodges, and I live at 321 Fort Clark Road and have been a Kenny County resident since 2004. And I want to say that I'm pretty concerned and distressed about this project. And I know we're all good people. We mean what's good for everyone. And I try to think about how it would affect everyone and how it would affect our property values. And I've tried to research the lawsuit, and I can't get to records because they're packed away somewhere because the court's office is not being used for something else. I will tell you, I'm really nervous standing here because I'm looking at people that I've been friends with ever since I moved here.
All right. Just think of us all sitting here naked, massages, and you'll be all right.
No, no, I don't need to be silly.
No, no, I'm not. You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
I am nervous because I would never want to offend anyone here, and I think most of you know that. I'm gonna read what it took me long hours to compose, and I really think it's all about communication, if I could just say that. If we don't get clear communication constantly, human beings go to the fourth quadrant and make things up, you know? Think the worst, sometimes the sky is falling. And so here is what I have to say. Many concerned citizens have come to understand recently that from the beginning, you, our Commissioners, were not seeking to do this proposed drainage improvement plan in its entirety. If that is the case, we're confused. There was a lot of money spent on a plan, and then there are workshops, and if people don't put time and money into things, then they don't really want to move forward in general. So the proposed drainage improvement plan, which I have gone through, it's a 152-page document, and being the type of teacher and musician and artist that I am, I would tell you it wasn't an easy thing to get through it. Plan appears to state in Section 2.4 that the plan must be fully implemented. Also, in the January workshop, the engineers seemed to say it is all or nothing. So you can understand why we're confused. And it has, if this has been the intention of all of you sitting here, why wasn't it communicated from the beginning? Because when we see things like, we're just being torn down, creeks widening from, I walk it every day, everybody knows, you can call me the walker, trees that I absolutely adore won't be there anymore. And we haven't had enough rain since I've been here for there to even be a minimal flood, and I see all kinds of things wrong in the county. So here's what I'd like to ask the Commissioners. If this was the intention, I was, I was made to understand it was the intention of the whole Commissioners Court, that not, this was a pick and choose, you never intended to do the entirety of this plan. Can you address that, please? I'm here to listen.
You're missing one area. I don't know what happened. You got two in? Not the same.
Can we talk about the subject? Thank you.
All right. The subject is, this is a working plan. Yes, he recommended that if it was to work properly, all of it needed to be done. If it didn't, we weren't gonna do all of it, then we would need to look and choose if we want to do parts of it to help relieve, alleviate the situation when it arises. So as far as communication, notifications went out to the...
I don't think that's an answer from the Commissioners. I'd like to hear from each one of you individually, was that your intention from the beginning? That it would be a pick and choose thing? Thank you, Jim.
We really viewed the report that came out as a needs assessment, hydrologically, the survey, the engineering, and when we saw the plan that they had, there wasn't any of us that liked it at all, and that was well-known. And we really objected.
Start right here, it wasn't well-known. It wasn't well-known.
Those that attended the meetings.
It wasn't well-known. We were.
And I don't want to argue with you, I'm just telling you that that's the way it was. It was never something that we viewed as being a plan that we would endorse at all. I think I used expression and argued with the engineer, and some of you were present for that dialogue. And then it threw a wide loop that we were not interested in, that the mission of the Commissioners Court was to look at the Lost Morris Creek itself and to see what needed to be done to basically maintain the flowage. And in the city of Rackinville, there's stagnant water holes, big ones, and so there were issues related to that, health-wise. And so the, I hope I've answered your question, that our intent was never to adopt that.
So that's on, it's now on record for all of us to know that the whole Commissioners Court had no intention of following through with this plan in its entirety.
No, it's not feasible. The price tag that was placed on it was $30 million. The grant we were looking for and have not applied for, we're just like the judge said, we're in the very beginning stages, is $5 million max. And so that in itself would tell you that it would have to be something very minor in scale compared to the overall investment the hydrologists and the engineer had come up with. And so there was an exchange in that particular meeting between me and the engineer that they had gone off and made a huge project that would not be something that the court could, would want even if we had the money. But definitely a financial constraint was a major part, other than not lacking the plan at all. So it's unfortunate that our efforts to say that's not even an adopted plan, it was a study, and that is an instrument that's, in its way, is usable for future. It's not to be used now, but perhaps in the future, it'll be a living instrument, and maybe it'll be referred to, maybe it'll be beneficial to the city itself, maybe it'll be beneficial to the Ford and the development of properties there to know exactly where the flood zone is, and all the contributing factors that are involved there. So if, if, if we didn't do a good job of getting the word out, I apologize for that. And I'll certainly say I'm sorry if we failed to, to make that known. But I think in the various conversations I've had, both by email and telephone and personal contact, I've made it clear that's not a plan. It's never been adopted by the court, it would not be.
So how are we continuing to pursue a plan that you have no intention of doing?
We're really not pursuing the plan, it's just the plan is there, we're actually not pursuing it at all. Everything's really come to a standstill, and we're trying to get everybody on the same page and determine what we should do.
Maybe a new study or something?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, so, so there won't be any more workshops because we're not pursuing the plan?
Well, now, as far as the city would be concerned, I think we should continue to have workshops, I really do, but not necessarily to approve that plan, but to work on, on the issue itself.
Okay.
And I know the city has their particular ideas of what they would like to pursue, and we're sensitive to that. We're, as Judge stated, we're more, you know, in mediating and trying to help and to facilitate and bring people together and see what would be possible, what would the interest be? If there's no interest, and I think I told you this, if, if the Ford doesn't want to be a part of it, we're okay with that. You know, it's okay. The offer was made, and I think through the years, what I've heard is, we're never included. Why aren't we never included in anything? Isn't there funding that would help us? And so, granted, we made the offer in good faith. There was no type of leverage or arm twisting, it just, this is it, it was here. And in the very beginnings, the representative from the Ford, which we've been informed shouldn't have been the representative, did attend the meetings and did not make a decision, but basically gave a report to that administration. And our understanding from that was that there was an encouragement to let's see what we can do. And so we didn't stop, we just operated on who and what we had to work with. And so in no way were we, I think there was an insinuation maybe that we were trying to use that person, and that is not so at all. He was the one that showed up at the meeting, and he was the manager at that time, and so we assumed that that was fine, and everyone was welcome. But don't blame the Commissioners because the representative of the Ford was not endorsed by the board, we had no idea. But that, you know, comment has been made, in writing.
Oh, okay. I would, I, I appreciate your communication always with me, I think I told you that in our email. And I guess I want to finish by saying I don't know how anyone could ever think that doing what that plan proposes to our creek would be anything you would ever look at again, it would go in File 13. It makes no sense. And I know you love the Ford as much as any of us do, probably more. And so that said, I, I would just like to plead with the county Commissioners that they would start new discussions about new ideas that would be beneficial to both the board and the city and the county. I understand that you want to help people, I do that, I do understand that, but this, this particular plan, I laid away long times at night, I don't urge.
It's not a good plan.
It's, it's really bad. And so that said, I appreciate all of you sitting here, I want to thank our board members for being here and taking time out of their day and driving long distances to be here, and thank you very much, and I must thank you for being here.
Before, thank you for coming up and making that comment. I do have to agree with Mr. Ward that the city would benefit from it, from, we needed a little while, a lot of the water that does come from Lost Morris Creek that floods into 90 hits back up at 90 because the flow, the outflow of it going into the Ford backs that up with the also, the other added water that's coming in from McKenzie Bay. So it would help us dearly to implement whatever plan that we can in the new discussion share, because there is a lot of families and lives that are alongside that river that would benefit truly from it as well. So that's, and we have these 12 low-water crossings, and at that point, we would have to reroute all of our infrastructure when it comes to utilities, gas, water, sewer, so that way we can keep any type of damage minimal, and hopefully, God willing, no lives will be taken.
I think we would all like to support a plan that would do that, that wouldn't harm other people. Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
For those who don't know me, my name is Tony Hackable, and I am a Director on the Board of Fort Clark Forest Association, Fort Clark Springs. Leading up to this workshop tonight, I did a little scrambling to, to try to open communication with several different people that I thought it might be important to talk to. And I tell you that because before I initiated that effort, and because I don't live here in Rackinville or on the Ford, I live in DeHennis, on a day-to-day basis, I'm not exposed to what I eventually perceived as an outrage by many different individuals that knew just enough about what was being proposed to happen, to be dangerous. And I don't mean that as criticism of, of anyone. It's kind of like I heard a preacher use the word ignorant one time, and explained along with the use of that word, that ignorant is not, he didn't say it in the context of being critical, but ignorance is a lack of knowledge. Simply put, it is not a critical name to be given or adjective to be given to someone. But it's very clear to me that we may all be somewhat victims of what Ms. Hodges mentioned when she first started talking, and I think what John mentioned when he was saying what he said, and that is a lack of communication. I asked Judge Schuster if I could sit up here beside him on this panel, and you need to know that I don't have any authority to make any representation on behalf of Fort Clark Springs simply because I'm the Director on the Board. Whatever decision would be made by the Board at some point in the future would be made by the Board, and I'm one of five people that would sit on that, that sit on that Board and that would be making that decision. I asked Judge Schuster if I could come sit up here as kind of a show of unity, not a show of unity in the effort to get this project off the ground, but as a show of unity to make the effort to join in the discussion, which obviously would fill in that gap that you talked about, Ms. Hodges, and that was mentioned by others, that there's communication that needs to take place. When I have heard from many different individuals about what their perception of this project is and what it's going to do and how it's gonna happen, it just absolutely scared the hell out of me. I felt inclined to say... I felt inclined to say, holy mackerel, we need to get busy and stop them. Well, how do you stop something that's not even been started yet? There is no, you heard Commissioner Ward say, there is no commitment to do anything yet. And what was interesting to me, I may go over three minutes if I'm talking with you. What's interesting to me, when I started doing research into this, and I don't mean research just into this subject, but research in, including years and years of looking back. And y'all know it better than I do, and if I say something wrong, raise your hand, throw a rock at me or something. But I'm telling you right now that it is my perception and my belief that there has been a, always been, many times there has been a difficult time for the Ford and the Commissioners' Court and the city of Bracketville to communicate and to work together. Now, I'm certainly not throwing stones at anybody either because that happens. But I think it's important that we all recognize here tonight that there are things that need to be done, whether it's for the city of Bracketville, like Mayor Martinez said, whether it's the county's care of the dam and the spillway and the system that controls water that comes into Bracketville, or whether there's a need for something to be done in Las Moras Creek on Fort Clark Springs. I think we should agree that those things need some attention. And we can agree to do that by also agreeing to work in unity with arriving at a solution that would satisfy each one of us. And when I say us, I mean the Ford in this case, the county and the city. That may be impossible to do, but it's at least important to make the effort to do that. I've been involved in projects in the past, been involved, a lot of engineering work. And I can tell you that engineers are like lawyers. And if you don't know it, I'm a lawyer. Engineers are like lawyers. When they get a chance to keep that ticket rolling, they do that. I'm not being critical of them because I think the engineers' efforts at helping to identify the problem areas is very much needed. But from a philosophical standpoint, I think we really need to stop the rumors that have been circulating about what the Commissioners' Court intends to do to the Ford. And at least that's one thing that I identified as a prevailing problem, problem that I identified. When you've heard Judge Schuster, you've heard Commissioner Ward say, we haven't made a decision. We haven't decided that we are contracting with anyone to do anything yet. So individually, I'm reaching out to you, Judge Schuster, and the rest of the commissioners and say if we intend to move forward at all, I'd like your commitment to us at the Ford, and I'm sure you give it to the city of Bracketville, that we will continue to work together to identify those needs that can be met by whatever kind of grant money might be available. And let's stop the vicious attacks using knowledge or facts that are misleading or simply false. I hope I'm not offending anyone in this room. I certainly didn't mean to. I've been involved in lots of different workshops, some of which resulted in production, some of which fizzled and went away. And I think that we might be near the time when this one may fizzle and go away if we don't decide to do something about it. So, thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Anybody else concerned or anything?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Ken Tripp. My wife and I have a residence in Fort Clark Springs, Unit 38. We also have a residence in Missouri County, which are borders Harris and Galveston Counties. So all I keep hearing about is a tropical storm that happened in the nineties and stationed itself over here and flooded a little bit? Yeah, we go through there quite frequently in my other residences. Roads will be impassable. You will have some highway shut down here or there. It's not uncommon. How often does Highway Ninety actually get shut down or flooding? And I'm going to go with the previous gentleman's statement. There's one way for us to not be ignorant. We'd like these answers. They can help us. So how often do we have a problem with flooding from tropical storms or other severe rain events? Do y'all have an answer for that? Any chance right now? Or can y'all put one out? Just send out there? Is this one isolated event? Or is it one of many? Because we have a lot of drainage in our county and even Missouri County, where our other residence is. And around our town, from other residences that, in Angleton, they spend a lot of money, retention ponds, pumping, moving water out of around the city and any high residence subdivision just south of the city to get it out and around. Is any discussion with engineers on any of that? Any retention ponds in the city, any pumping stations, moving it out where it doesn't even impact the creek as much as what that event did? Keep it away from Highway Ninety? Yeah. Things to think about, things to consider, things to give us some answers on in the future. But I would not want to see what is in that plan be implemented on the creek on Fort Clark Springs. That would be devastating to the citizens there. And appreciated if you walk the trails regularly. Thank you.
Afternoon.
Evening.
Paul or J D, what do you say? I am living on the Ford. I saw Cameron and Open Mic, so I take a chance to use that. I will say too that sometimes some of us are least likely to offend others and some of us more likely to offend others. And I guess I'll go on record that, you know, to do right, we might have to offend others. So I'm not going to be here to offend anybody. I apologize if I do, but I just wanted to say my piece, just like everybody else. Lived on the Ford for a long time, since 2000. You know, it was and is a beautiful place to live. It's the most beautiful part of this county. Las Moras Springs is the treasure of this county. There's other treasure. There's solar farms. There's windmills. There's farming. There's other things that, you know, bring income to its people. But the crown jewel of this county is Las Moras Springs. And a lot of people are passionate about that spring. People have been passionate about that springs for 10,000 years. I was digging yesterday and I'm finding arrowheads that are 3,000 years old. And people have been here enjoying the nature and the beauty of that place for a long time. And I'm just going to say, it's not the drainage ditch for flood control. You can't violate the pristine beauty of that place to turn it into a ditch like lives out here, you know, right next to this community center. So we plead with our county leaders to understand that. When a picture comes out, whether it's false information or not the plan or whatever, when you see pictures of, you know, what was released, people react to that. And when that gives the impression that the pristine sanctity of Las Moras Creek is going to be bulldozed, misconception or not, you know, that should not happen for one, and it needs to be put out that it won't happen if that's the case. So I hope that's not the case. There's a lot of people willing to fight for the beauty of the springs, and I hope it's maintained and we don't turn into the drainage ditch for anybody. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Renee Viarra. I live in town. I don't live on the Ford. So I want to say thank you to Mayor Martinez for your efforts served and the commissioners. And like I'm saying, I live in town, so I'm worried about when it does flood. I don't care if it flooded one time, as long as I lived here. And I've lived here my whole life. And my father has a residence right there on the creek. And when it did flood in Ninety-eight, it was all the way up to his front step. So I know what it's like, how devastating it can be. And I know there's others present here that live in town and were devastated by that flood. So that's what I'm worried about. I'm not worried about a tree that's going to get moved or taken away. I'm not worried about, I'm worried about our lives. So like I said, my father owns property, and my husband and I live up on Patrick Street. So every time it rains, all that debris comes down and is settling on the creek. And it needs to be cleared. It needs to be fixed. It needs to be taken care of. So, because now my son lives where my father, that's my son's house now. That's going to be, that's my son's property now. So if it rains and it floods again, same thing's going to happen now because it's not taken care of. The creek bed is now a mess because all the debris has, comes from the top. Or should the dam, you know, bust, it's going to flood again. And I'm not worried about Highway Ninety. I'm worried about that creek bed that is going to... And every time it does, we get a little bit of rain, that creek bed rises and the erosion is messing up the property. So that's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about our lives and others that live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Working out. We've got to cover an issue that was a major part of our thinking, and that was the fact that when homes were flooded in Unit 1 in Fort Clark, there was a lawsuit filed against the entities, namely the city and the county. There were a number of residents, and we do have that on PDF. Anyone who would like to have it, I'll be glad to send it to you. The results were, it was a lengthy trial. Some have counted the pages, 300 pages. I know that at the conclusion of that trial, there was an award made to those residents and for their damages, and it wasn't small, and it was considerable. And I had just come in for the first time as county judge, and it was year 91. And the district judge was George Thurman. And he was known to be very blunt and direct and sometimes rude, and it was one of those days. And at the conclusion of that trial, he brought the file and slammed it on my desk, and he was angry. And he said, "You all have done nothing, absolutely nothing," meaning the county, "to maintain the flowagesment that goes through the city of Bracketville and into Fort Clark. And these people's homes were flooded. And I'm going to tell you, if it happens again, you all are going to pay, and you're going to pay heavy." And I listened to him, and I thought, wow, okay, I guess we didn't... And I said, "Judge, we don't have any money." He said, "That's no excuse. Find it." And I thought, underwater rock. But, and those were lean times, very, very lean times for Kenny County. And you may say it was years ago, and yes, it was. Has there been some flood since? Yes, there had. And so it's, that is one reason that it's on our minds to try to address a problem that has already been litigated. The next part is the fact that the county seeking to get a response from the public to see what projects they felt like the county could help with. And it was an opinion poll. And we, Almond Candy, are seated right here, our grant planners. They conducted the poll, and we made a maximum effort, it was over days and weeks, to try to get everyone possible to voice their opinion. And what was overwhelming, the results of the poll were, number one was street paving, and number two was drainage. And so we thought, okay, all right, how can we begin to look for that? How can we begin to address the concerns of the public? So you might say we were acting in a rogue manner. Not really. And when you consider the two issues that I've just brought to your attention, I think that you would say they're attempting to be responsive. They're attempting to listen to the public and listen to the court and to do something. So oftentimes, we find in government today that people say they just don't do anything. Why don't they try to do something? And so there was a good faith effort made and to address that. And so I think with a little more background and the gentleman that commented about flooding and doubted that it took place, the reason that the Army Corps of Engineers and the Soil Conservation Service designed and constructed the two watershed dams on the north side would be the northern city limits of Bracketville was due to flooding. It wasn't that they just had money they wanted to spend. This began in the early 60s, '61, '62. Most of us weren't born then, but we know it happened. But we know that what came forth from that was easements. And there were easements surrounding the dams and for flowage. And all of the water followed its natural channel, which was Las Moras Creek. And to have any control over that, that's just where the runoff goes. And so the result of that was that an easement was conveyed by a subsidiary of Brown and Root by the name of Texas Railway Equipment. And they cooperated in conveying an easement to the city and the county to maintain the flowagesment through Fort Clark. It wasn't something that they were forced to do. They weren't held at gunpoint. But they were cooperative in the requests made by the Army Corps of Engineers and the Soil Conservation Service. That easement has not been abused. There's been no abuse by the city or the county. What we have done there has been with the Board of Directors' approval through the years. We've always been sensitive to that. And there was a grant obtained, and it was an NRCS grant. I was not on the Commissioners' Court at that time. It was approximately 10 years ago. And it was to clear the debris and the fallen trees, and they were considerable. And a lot of them you can see now today that have been pushed away from the mainstream of Las Moras Creek to prevent any retention of water and to ensure that the flow of the creek was maintained. And so a little more background, you ask for information, and you may get whithering what you want, but these are things that actually took place, more or less, in chronological order. And so would we say it's enough? Well, no, there's still, you know, debris. There's still trees. As Lady reported, even in town, there is. So there is work to be done. And so fault is perhaps for failing to communicate fully in every way that was not the intent. that was not the intent, uh, it was, um, as I said, a good faith effort. Uh, and we were responsive to, um, what the public and the court's, uh, decision was. A little more background.
Anybody else?
So, so working with, uh, the county, other entities as well, Techstat, Fort, but we have been in conversations with Techstat to go in and clean up the area around Highway ninety. So once it, the flood or any type of water that comes from Las Modas Creek, it hits ninety at the coverts that are maintained by Techstat. So we have been in a discussion with them as well to go in and clean out some of those coverts to get it, to keep it flowing naturally. Now, what happens when it does hit Highway ninety, and I was with Mr. Guzman, and he was kind of up to go over there with me to look at the covert that's by the entrance of the gate coming into the fort. We have a covert that's probably around seven feet wide with a six-inch or eight-inch of round covert. But once it gets to the fence line and comes over, we could possibly, we're discussing it, that we could possibly work together to make it a little bit quieter because currently right now, when the water hits Highway ninety fence line at the fort, it only turns into an eight-inch, uh, free flow. Everything else through time, as rains come, everything but sediment has settled. And then with the winds blowing, we have a lot of high winds, so the dirt carries, mud sticks, it just keeps getting pounded. So, and, and the city as well, that's what's happening as well, and we need to address that issue as well to keep it free flowing. But that's a, a way that us and the fort are going to be working together. Techstat did their part to try to clean, to clean out the coverts where, um, Spring Street to Highway ninety is at. And now with the help of Mr. Guzman and the fort, we'll be able to clean out those draws as well that are right by the fence. And then from there, it's already open, opening cleared for the water just to continue to, to free flow, right? Um, but yeah, we definitely want to have the best interest of everybody. Everybody is definitely going to be able to, um, be rewarded to use the spring. The spring is an amazing thing for Brackettville, for the fort. Um, originally it used to free flow through Brackettville, right? Back in the day, but it was cemented, right? It was covered up, so that way the water wouldn't be pushed into the fort when the military was here. So naturally, it did come from Brackett, and it, that's where the original spring was at. But we are going to work together with this, so that way we can do great things with Brackett and, and keep, uh, the environment. I know that for some people, the environment is very precious as well, so we want to take care of life as well, living human and the environment as a human. So, that's all I have.
There's something else that's been somewhat confused, um, is the fact that we're working on a hazardous mitigation plan. And we say "we" is the Commissioners' Court and our grant planners and, uh, the community as a whole. It is, uh, now a required plan that the, um, the communities must adopt and, um, and have it approved, and it goes to TETM, uh, and it goes on up to FEMA for approval, and it will be the, um, the cornerstone of our eligibility to obtain all grants. And so we've been working on that, and I, I had some confusing remarks about hazardous mitigation flooding, and it was basically commingling the two subjects. And so I wanted to make it clear that, um, all are welcome to be a part of that as well, and it has been, uh, the meetings have been well attended. And, um, and so I wanted to take the opportunity to give you more information, uh, about, uh, different things that are going on and, uh, the fact that, uh, those entities that do not participate will not be eligible for any monetary benefit in the event of a hazardous situation. Uh, it's, it's interesting, uh, the information that's been compiled that, um, are basically, um, the, the whole complex of Kenny County is combined into that, and, um, the different businesses that, um, have reported in and their, um, storage of fuel products, um, and things of that nature. And, uh, we learned that we have a laboratory, um, at, uh, at Klein where they do explosives, and it's in the little mountain range on the east end of the Anacachua Mountains. And, uh, and so, uh, we, we found out, we, we heard them go off every now and then, but didn't really know, but, uh, there is a laboratory there that, uh, does testing for UL and others. And, um, and so, uh, my point in bringing that up is that we've learned a whole lot more about what goes on in Kenny County, and, um, and it's beneficial. It's beneficial for emergency response, uh, it's beneficial for the neighbors, and, uh, to know, uh, you know, those things that are important, uh, for a community to be aware of. And so, um, I give credit for reminding me that, uh, that we needed to distinguish the two. And then in addition to that, there's, um, the Local Emergency Planning Commission, LAPC, and that is, uh, basically a group of citizens that, uh, come together and we adopt a plan, and it's being updated right now as well. And, um, citizen participation is, is really needed, uh, to adopt the, um, LAPC plan and for the community to be aware that it's a plan that's enacted in an emergency situation. And, um, the, the top of the pyramid is the county judge, and then, uh, from there down, the various entities and, uh, businesses from Techstat, Riverland Electric Co-op, AAP, all have a, a particular role in that particular plan in the event that we have an emergency situation. And we'd all have to admit that in the last ten years, the complexion of Kenny County has changed. Uh, we've got pipelines, uh, we've got additional electric transmission lines, we've got lots of, um, proposed, um, uh, solar farms. And, um, the, all of these have presented their own, uh, positive things, but in, in their own respective ways, there's some negatives that come along with it. And, uh, generally, those are, uh, emergency situations and, um, us having the infrastructure and the, um, the ability to respond to those. So, um, it's not the same. Uh, maybe many of us wanted to keep it a little frontier area in town, but it's changed. Uh, the positives on the additions of, uh, all of the, uh, uh, pipelines and the solar farms and the wind farm, it's been a tremendous increase to the ethylone tax value for Kenny County, and the net result has been that the tax rate has, um, decreased. Uh, that is something that's very, um, unusual. Uh, so we have benefited from that. We can talk about, yes, those things that are maybe a little bit negative, but on the positive side, uh, they have contributed a great deal, uh, to our, our tax base and the revenue that is brought in from them, and it has made some things possible. Uh, you know, civic center upgrade and restoration, things of this nature that were long overdue, things that we've wanted to do for a long time, we finally have the resources to do those things. And so, um, forgive me for too much information, but I felt it was, uh, worthy of sharing those particular items with you as well.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Just one question, Bill. Um, is Brackettville, Fort Clark, and I don't know the ground near it, can we even walk there?
There are some places I would say, are there, are we in a flood plain? There, there are areas lumped in the creek that are, yes.
So it's, it's selective, not all the city or the county is involved.
Majority, majority of the city, um, I would say to the, to the east is going to be affected dearly. There's, um, I think the roster has around fifty-six properties listed that are alongside the creek. More than eighty percent of them are all residents in Brackettville. And for the most part, we would like to hope that it was, this would never happen, right? But it only takes one time to happen again. We've already had it one time, and it's hard to predict on what is going to happen or to say that we're over-exaggerating right now, but the future will definitely let us know if we didn't do it.
I'm not a public speaker, but I just sat there long enough and I had to say something. Uh, it does not have to flood to affect the people who live along Lost Morris Creek. Uh, in two thousand, I lived north of Ziggy's in a little house, uh, across from where Mr. Lozano used to live. I know that that doesn't mean anything to a lot of people, but I lived there for two years, and several times we had maybe two or three inches of rain, and my yard was a foot deep in water. If I had not had a little concrete driveway going into my garage, I would not have been able to get into my house. So I'm concerned about the families that live along Lost Morris Creek. There are, um, there's debris, there's, uh, water, there's crossings that need to be worked on. There's all kinds of problems along Lost Morris Creek. And if you've been down along the creek in Fort Clark, and I love Fort Clark Springs, I was a property owner there for fifteen years in the eighties and till ninety-five, and I love Fort Clark. I lived there. Probably die there, but the creek has problems. And anybody that does not agree with that, you need to go down and walk along the creek. The creek has problems. I'm not saying that the proposal hears the answer to everything, but this proposal was a seed over a year ago. Y'all have been talking about it for a long time. If people attended meetings, they would know that. I'm sorry, but, and I don't want to offend anyone, because I have a lot of friends on Fort Clark and in Brackettville. Brackettville's a wonderful city. I just wanted to have my say. Thank you.
Few words of encouragement. Uh, it's so nice to see y'all together, working together for our common cause, and I acknowledge you all. It's, uh, something we need.
Tim, I just love your history of what's happened here. I remember when I was about seven years old, walking out of Mr. Evans' office, which is now the Legacy Office, across from, from First State Bank, seeing canned goods float out the door when I was about seven. That was before the dams were built. And once the dams were built, it hasn't flooded like that. You, we can have a flood in Brackettville, Texas, and it not put a drop or a little water in those dams. I remember when the kids growing up, we were at the Baptist Church one morning, and in three hours, it rained six inches, and, uh, we lost, uh, you know, inside the church, y'all, we lost a lot of the seables. But that can happen without it even, because we are, we are another watershed behind those dams, if you think that. And, and, uh, I, I just think that Techstat, Fort Clark Springs, the city of Brackettville, Kenny County, and the downstream landowners need to just negotiate what's good for this county and what's good for this city and what's good for Fort Clark Springs. At Fort, and when I came in about a year, I was in office, the, we cleaned the creek, okay? And, uh, back then, the dams were taking out the, uh, not, uh, the, huh? Yeah. They, they took those dams out, and the water started flowing. There is a, there is a, uh, there's a dam, a bridge that's down below precinct through, there's a dam below, not a dam. What's that like? Down from, uh, Unit Three, Ferguson, Crossman area, that needs to be removed, and you need, you need more room for that water to not be held back. If you'll go there and look, you'll see old construction of that, of that bridge being fifteen foot higher than what it is there. And that was during army days, and they had, they had to get their horses and stuff across the creek. That, that dam was, or that bridge, that bridge was fifteen foot higher than where it is. And, uh, and then the bridge at the golf course, that impedes water, it holds it back. But, uh, then the problem you have with, with bridges like that, the trees break, there was, there were, anything gets in the creek, it's going to stop up those, those canopies or those, uh, tin-holes or whatever it is that the water's flowing through. And yeah, it could be a big one, but you could have three logs there stopping the water. So you need to have, in my opinion, you need to have more thoroughfare for your water, uh, that's, that's within the confines of the creek. Uh, the other day in talking to you, 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 you even mentioned in record minutes, Judge Schuster, about keeping the water in the confines of the creek and going thirty feet, thirty yards out from the edge of the creek and cleaning out under the trees to keep the debris out. After we cleaned the creek, we went to Fort Clark and asked Fort Clark to, to do upkeep and to do maintenance there. Well, they didn't have the money, and I was understanding, we didn't have the money either at the time. But that means you could go through and stay within the confines of the creek, not dredge the creek, so to speak, but then clean, clean the riparian areas that drain to the creek that's, that's free of debris, then that'll, you just need to flush out. And, uh, and you're going to have, you'll have to start there, of course, you can't start up there. But, uh, and y'all are smart enough and wise enough to do that, and, and, uh, I just encourage you all, but it needs to be done. It needs to be done. And Fort Clark is where you need to start. And I, I, you know, that's, that's to me, uh, my experience there is where it needs to start. But thank y'all for your, for having us. Thanks, everybody.
I'm, I'm in person, and I live right on the flood zone. I live on the west coast, and it, when it rains, it pours and it floods completely, you know, and so it really, more my concern is, like I said, safety, the, the more of the cleaning of the area, the little crossover, no, it's not good, it doesn't. It, once it floods, the water comes over to the top of the road, and it's hard, it's hard to get through. Sometimes we can't even get out of our own home because it's, you know, it's complete flooded. We bought a new trailer, six years behind, uh, in, you understand what I'm saying. But anyways, uh, they, we tried to put it a little closer to the, to the edge to keep it away from my mom's house, then they told us, no, I'm sorry, you're right on the flood zone, you have to push it back. So, you know, it's no, no, you know, you... So, you know, it's no, no, you know, it has to, something has to be done because my, my kids, my grandkids are always out there. It rains, it pours and they, they're running right to the water, but there's always, always a lot of debris in there. Like I said, I'm not pointing fingers, but it does need to be a lot of maintenance down there, you know, get it fixed, get something that, it's, it's our safety. My, my, although my thing is my grandkids, because they're always at my house, always, which they would stay home, but they don't. But anyways, that's, that's my point, just the safety of my kids, of our lives, the Wes Thomas, the Lomond, everything gets, because we're in a little hole, we're in a hole, so all of that area gets flooded, you know, there's, there's no way in or out, you know, it floods, you're stuck in there until it, it is all gone, so, sorry, my little, you know.
Hello, everyone. My name's Anilika Partan. I live at the Fort Clark, but I do own a property that runs through the Ford flood zone. I've owned it since two thousand four, two thousand five, so I wasn't there when that ninety-eight flood happened. But I do know every time we get a couple inches of rain, it floods and it's just stagnant water. It doesn't flow beautifully like it does in Fort Clark. It's just stagnant water that sits there for weeks. And it's a health issue because it's just a breeding zone for all the mosquitoes, debris builds up there and everybody who lives among there has to deal with it. So just to briefly let you know what we have to deal with every time we get a couple of inches of rain, not even a big, you know, not even more than ninety-five inches, but that's what we deal with. Thank you.
Just to be clear, the lawsuit we're talking about was filed in nineteen eighty-eight. So it was the flood of ninety-eight, I mean, there was a flood in ninety-eight, but this is another flood. I would assume it was in eighty-seven, eighty-six, but it was filed in eighty-eight, so it was multiple floods.
When it does rain, right? Now, let's speak again, right? When it does rain, it does come down fast, like Mr. Shanahan was expressing. What, from the Church of Christ of Mount Kirk, is that the one at the very top of the hill of six hundred and four? Yes, okay. So when it starts pouring down from there, you can follow it literally all the way to Highway Ninety, right where the Pizza Hut, pardon me, Pizza, wish you had Pizza, working on it, right? Pizza Outpost and, yeah, which is Uncle Randy's now. So all of that water flows all that way and then anything that's coming off of the back end of the school will feed into that as well. So a lot of the water also, like they were explaining, from the top of the hill, will all meet up eventually at the, at the creek and then it's, it's going to be a lot of water, right? So that way we can, if we can just be prepared for that later, that some of the issues that we do run in the city, that, and then when it does come down that fast, it does back up, back into the city. So it's just a tidbit of information that it's, needs to be said.
Okay. While we've been sitting here and listening to everybody talk and listen to some of the commissioners and stuff, I've been mulling over my interaction with Mr. Prarick, Commissioner Prarick, at the beginning of this meeting. And I am saddened by it because I never intended to hurt anybody's feelings, but I do want to continue to claim or clear the record. I've been on the board at Fort Clark for a year and it's been really, it's been really hard on all of us. And we have done nothing but preach community and we've done a damn good job of it. We really have. And that's, that's who we are. We, we have tried to bring together parties that otherwise have fought. We have preached that we do not want, in any shape or fashion, fight with the city or the county and that we've been baffled as to why that's, you know, perceived to have always been the case. And we are absolutely, as a board, not at a fever pitch about this plan. But it is the only plan that has been proposed. It is the only forward-facing element of the flood mitigation idea. As this meeting, as we sit here today, there's not been any other alternative of a plan, just that plan. The reason that I say that is because in my, in my conversation with Commissioner Prarick when we got here, he mentioned, he brought up Mr. Peterson and Tim also did, Mr. Ward also did the same thing. And I sent a letter earlier this week outlining a bunch of issues that we would have federally with widening the creek. And I think, I haven't told any commissioners why I sent that letter, it was just a letter for matter of record. Because even at to that point, we have nothing in writing saying, hey, we are not pursuing this plan, which is, once again, the only plan that we see, that the public sees. So this is, this, that was not meant to hurt anybody's feelings, it was meant to point out some issues with widening the creek that may have not been thought of and, and to generate a response of, one that was eloquently said by Mr. Schuster at the beginning, which was, we are not pursuing all or maybe any parts of this plan. The mayor mentioned a minute ago that he was in communication with Tex Dodd in order to clean out the culverts on Highway Ninety. I imagine that took a few phone calls, it took a few emails. Now, I'm going to point something out and maybe everybody up here get mad at me, I don't know, but nobody on the board received an email to show up to this meeting. And we are the other entity on the agenda. So we should have had an email saying, hey, you're on the agenda, we want you to come work with us. That would have been the proper way for this to happen. I, I was actually told by other members that this meeting was going to happen. That's not okay as a board member. If we were doing something that impacted the city or the county, we would one hundred percent reach out to the county and the city, to our counterparts, and we would communicate with them. And so I think it truly is what Tony said, which is a lack of communication on both sides. I talked to Mr. Ward several times on the phone and there were pleasant conversations. I feel it's necessary for me to say all this because I really, my whole life I've admired and looked up to a lot of people that sit here today. And, and I'm, I'm just somewhat baffled that maybe I screwed up this bad and maybe that I was misunderstood as much as I was. I had a conversation with Mr. Shanahan at the, earlier, we was, last week, and we talked about the creek, we talked about communication, we talked about, you know, working with the city. And it, it got me to, we, we cleaned a bunch of trails, my company cleaned some trails on the creek as a donation, and we went up and down the creek and saw, saw a bunch of it. But you also mentioned some bridges, saw, went and looked at those bridges this weekend, I was in town. And I went and looked at them and you're correct, they do impede flow. The one at the golf course does impede the flow. And it's not enough room to, if rushing water is coming through it, it's going to slow the water down. And so, once again, I'll apologize to my friends that sit at this table that I've offended y'all. And I'll state my position, and that is, is that it's what it's always been, we're a community. I preach that life and death, every meeting, that we stick together, we, we fight hard together, we work together, we have differences, and we communicate. And sometimes that's harder. But I have absolutely zero issues with cleaning the creek, it should be done. And then any other issues that impede flow that would raise water within the city of Brackville or, you know, our own, you know, uniform, I'm one hundred percent on board with that. I'm not for widening the creek, but I am for cleaning the creek one hundred percent in any capacity that doesn't do permanent damage to the riparian habitat, you know, exceeding the boundaries of the creek. I think that's necessary. And then as far as the discussion on bridges, that's a pretty simple one to have, an engineer to look at them and figure out something to maybe make them better. And obviously, everybody knows about the walls of the pool. There could be a flood, certainly wash those, undermine those walls and cave them in in the future, and so they need to be addressed. But once again, we, we want to work with the county and the city. We, we have, we want to stop this idea of wherever this comes from, that somehow the association wants to be at ends, at odds with our counterparts. We don't. And I think I expressed that to Mr. Ward. So sorry for any part that I had in exciting anybody or insulting or hurting my friends.
Did you not send an email? Is the fort not in our email contact along with the city and stuff with notification?
I checked, the agenda was sent out to the group message that I sent out to everyone. Nobody could have more.
Okay. I apologize for that because I thought the, but the notices for the meetings were going to your board president and I apologize to that.
In the past, I have sent it to the president, had the email, the one email that I gave up at Fort Clark. Those were for three days of workshop.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll take full responsibility to that, Mr. Wally, and I apologize. But then if, if y'all would get with Ms. Flores and make sure we have the correct emails on who is, who isn't, you know, who's going to be designated today or tomorrow or whatever, we have a meeting again or something like that. I know y'all probably have the same formal rules as we do, maybe, I don't know. So that kind of got to be careful there, but y'all could post it, you know, and stuff, and I apologize to that. Any other discussion tonight, this evening from the, yes, sir, come on?
This one will be real quick and brief. I've never been accused of not having a loud enough speaking voice for everyone to hear Safety of the community is definitely utmost paramount. Areas that I have seen or count knowledge of that are recurrent flooding along streams, creeks, bayous, drainage ditches, whatever. There is another alternative that is frequently utilized, and this one will not be popular with some for sure, that is to buy out the properties and allow them to relocate within the residence or help raise the properties so that they are not as subjected to flood. We just, there's all kinds of options and ideas that could be pursued, but that's just another one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Yes, can I ask you a question? Correct. Can you give us a reading, likely version of that lawsuit of the nineties that sparked this conversation today?
What do I mean? Yes and no. It was filed in nineteen eighty-eight. Players on the lawsuit that, you know, several parties to the suit were culpable for the damages of them, he didn't want to be advertised and whatnot. I mean, the file's three hundred pages long though. I mean, there's several studies in it, you know, it's, I've looked at maybe fifteen percent of the lawsuits so far, but I do have a electronic file about the entire case. If, I mean, I think I sent it to you.
I just, I was just hoping you could elaborate because I think it would have sparked the letters to where we are today. Something I heard yesterday about Judge Drucker and everything else, and what stood in his setup for?
Well, the spark that really led to this is actually the easement that was ran into the city and the county in nineteen sixty-one. That put the city and the county with some type of liability to mitigate the flooding that occurs. And so the lawsuit that happened in nineteen eighty-eight wasn't because of the nineteen sixty-one easement that was granted. I think of like a lot of people said here, this is a lack of communication, lack of coordination, and a lot of people going off half-cocked about having all the information, unfortunately. But that happens, it will continue to happen, it's human nature, and that's why we're here today. But I did, I did want to make sure that people do realize the hazard mitigation grant that Commissioner Ward was talking about is a separate and apart from what we're talking about here today. But for, for Fort Clark and the city to be eligible for any federal funding, they have to be part of that and the entity in that plan, which is imperative. I want to make sure everyone knows that's what the board is.
I think also with definitely having communication and letting everybody know, I think the other added benefit to, that needs to be added to that is definitely participation, so that way we can all be present when these meetings are taking place. Because I think we put in the newspapers, social media, public hearings, that was all on everybody's agenda.
All right, anybody else? Are we ready to wrap it up? We've been here an hour and a half. We appreciate everyone coming out. As discussed, took some notes here, stuff, concerns and stuff. Like I said, this is just a feasibility study, there's no plan in place, there's, by no means has there been any action other than we, the county paid to have a feasibility study to try to satisfy and work towards what the lawsuit and what the settlement court order has asked us to do as the county and so forth from that. With that being said, then we, okay, involves the fort, involves the city as we work through this process. Also like to just say that, like, we, the whole big plan at one time is, is impossible. Little bits and pieces of the plan, maybe, but we got to consider the whole project if it adds somewhat beneficial in some shape, form, or fashion. It planted the seed to get us here tonight or this evening, to have those other meetings that we had and so forth, you know, over the last, it's probably been longer than two years, it's been, you know, it's been a little over two years probably since this process has been started to talk about and what the, so forth from there. On behalf of the county and the court, again, we're just kind of mediating this and working through this, we'll continue to work to provide the mechanism, the vehicle to, for the city and the fort to be involved in this, and then the county that are taking their part of it with the dams and, and the work that the plan is recommended in some shape, form, fashion, a study that said, hey, this is what we were, this is, this was their recommendation and that's how we accepted it, so that's what we got to work for. It was a blank canvas, this is our canvas. Do we have to follow it? No. Is there parts of it that will be beneficial that we could do piece by piece over time? Yes. But do we want to proceed or not? That's the final question here this evening. And with that being said, I am asking that the fort put it on as a board activity, your agenda, not for Saturday, by no means, because it's for this, okay? To take the action of either yes or no. Continue to work with us and help us out and work with us to try to help clean up Lost Morris Creek to help the drainage. And the same with the city. The city, I'd ask for y'all to have it as an action item, to be on board or not. If you're not, that's fine. Fort, if you're not, that's fine. But as an obligation of the county and the lawsuit and the court order, we're obligated to do something regarding the drainage of Lost Morris Creek. Okay? We have the easement, we're not forcing ourselves in there by no means. If that's the decision of the fort, that's fine. We will consider taking legal actions to withdraw and give you the easement back to Fort Clark Springs. All right? Take us completely out of it, it's the liability will be on y'all and the process to go for will be on you. That is something that's on the table, that's an option. There's an option to do nothing, an option for us all to stay involved in it, to work through some part of this to get it worked out, okay? But by no means are we, you know, if, if that's something y'all say that, hey, we don't want to participate in it, have that as the action item, take the vote, we get the copy of the certified minutes, we file them, we'll go through the legal process then. we'll go through the legal process then and relinquish the easement back to Fort Clark Springs that was given to the county back in nineteen sixty-one. All right, I believe I was clear enough on that for everybody? All right, the city, would, if you'd like to stay, stay with us and work on this, it's not something that we're demanding that we're gonna do, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, say this is it, period? We're still sitting here at the table, we'd like to work it out. Are we gonna make everybody no happy? No. Okay? But can we get to some form of, of helping through some grant money to work on this project? If that's the case, then we'll move forward. So I'm asking the fort and the city to put this as action items on your agenda. If you'd like for me to be there or one of the commissioners to be there, more than happy to do that. Uh, obviously we have the same thing as a quarrel deal and all that, so, you know, I can't, a full suit of us couldn't be there. We could definitely be there if you, if you'd like for us to be involved in those meetings. That's an open invitation for whoever you'd like to have there. Understood? Uh, you're looking at a set of commissioners that have lived here their whole entire lives. Um, it's frustrating that the comments have been made, uh, the words have been spoken. We can't take those back, I've only lived here thirty years, raised my family here. And, uh, we're just trying to take the proper steps from something that's about twenty years old. And we've addressed it once with a little cleanup and now we need to look at doing something again and now we're looking at a, a larger picture of the cleanup, Fort Clark, the cleanup in the city and the, and the maintenance of the dams and so forth from there. We will continue to maintain the dams, that's our responsibility as commissioners, as the county and so forth. Uh, we just got a report back, uh, that was addressed today here in Commissioners Court regarding our sites, if they're one and two, the dams, they refer to them as sites one and two. So we need to address those needs as a county as well, up there to say in compliance with, um, the folks that regulate and oversee and come and inspect those dams annually. Yes, ma'am?
Judge, is there any, uh, help, maybe the Department of Customs and Wildlife, Air Force could help provide this?
They do, they do, yes, ma'am, they do, we do get, um, last year, we're fortunate enough, we generally get about twenty thousand dollars a year to help in maintenance and spraying the brush, mowing the weeds, maintaining the dams. Erosion's an issue, they want more vegetation, it has to be fenced off, there's no livestock on it. The dams are, are an easement that, that we have and it's, they're fenced off. So the pool of water where it pools is actually still in the property ownership of that property owner and so forth. So yes, the, the spillway, the dams, we, they want us to keep the brush out of there, they want us to keep vegetation on there at, at all times, they don't want anything and they're eating it, grazing it. They don't like the trails on the dams, they don't like the road. So all that's evaluated annually and we work to continue to maintain those dams.
I noticed they didn't give you a lot of money, I was hoping they'd give you some...
They give us twenty typically. This year we went back and, and the, um, I commend Commissioner Metabell and the Road Bridge Crew, they went out there and did a tremendous amount of work, piled a bunch of brush, burned it and everything. They ended up giving us forty thousand. I believe the total cost of that deal is about forty-six or so? Does that, does that sound about right? About forty-six thousand is what we were out, actually out of pocket. But we did get forty thousand, but generally it's twenty thousand to help us maintain the dams, okay? And their, and their structure. So with that being said, uh, I'll, uh, say that we're gonna end our workshop this evening, we've been here an hour and a half. We do appreciate, if you're Fort Clark Board Member, uh, please give them Ms. Forrest, make sure that we got the correct emails, call where we need to go on for the next notification. Uh, we won't have a, the, this will probably, y'all have it on the agenda for this weekend? Y'all do? City, maybe the next meeting for y'all? So we may not have another workshop meeting until after we get the report back from the city and so forth from that, okay? Is that fair enough for everybody? But remember the options we put out there, this is just simply a plan. We'll work towards a commitment and, and working to mediate and help navigate this also, but we need the commitments, yes or no, from the two other entities on y'all's side of the project, Fort Clark and the city of Bracketville. With that being said, God bless everyone and go do your rain dance. I appreciate everyone coming out and, uh, we're getting, uh, and a side note here is we're gonna get an electric billboard out here. So we'll keep items rolling on the billboard as well. But if, uh, again, we'll send out those notifications to the board, to the city and the next workshop will be posted. Thank y'all.
Thank you all for your...
Thank y'all.